Thank you and good evening. Judy, I don't have anything. You got anything?
Yes, I have an announcement that September 11th, so next Tuesday, a week from today, MINDOT will be sponsoring an intersection study on Highway 61 and Gilmore Avenue. They will be holding an open house here at Council Chambers from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., with a presentation to be made at 5:00 p.m. And the public and the council are invited to attend that.
Okay. That's it. Monica, call rules.
Mayor Miller, Councilwoman Thurlie.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
White.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, the first item, item 2.1, is to levy assessments for the 2012 Miscellaneous Utilities Project. This is for water service repairs and water and sewer access fees.
Okay, I'll open that public hearing and ask if there's anyone present wishing to speak to the levy assessments for the 2012 Miscellaneous Utilities Project. Anyone present wishing to speak to the levy assessments for the 2012 Miscellaneous Utility Projects? Anyone present wishing to speak to the levy assessments for the 2012 Miscellaneous Utilities Project? Okay, hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Counsel?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the levy assessments for 2012.
Okay, moved by Debbie.
Second.
Seconded by Michelle. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Which is to approve the levy assessments for the 2012 Miscellaneous Utilities Projects. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Item 2.2 is to levy assessments for the 2011 East Second Street Reconstruction Project. This is for the installation of new one-inch copper water service lines.
Okay, I'll open that public hearing and ask if there's anyone present wishing to speak to levy assessments for the 2011 East Second Street Project. Anyone present wishing to speak to levy assessments for the 2011 East Second Street Project? Anyone present wishing to speak to levy assessments for the 2011 East Second Street Projects? Hearing none. Close the public hearing.
I would so move to adopt the attached resolution to levy the assessments.
Okay, moved by George, seconded by Al. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion which is to levy the assessments for the 2011 East Second Street Project? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
Item 2.3 is to levy assessments for the 2011 Sidewalk Replacement Project.
Okay, I'll open that public hearing and ask if there's anyone present wishing to speak to the levy assessments for the 2011 Sidewalk Replacement Projects? Anyone present wishing to speak to the levy assessments for the 2011 Sidewalk Replacement Project? Anyone present wishing to speak to levy assessments for the 2011 Sidewalk Replacement Project? Okay, hearing none. I'll close the public hearing.
Move to approve.
Moved by Debbie.
Seconded.
By George. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion which is to approve the levy assessments for the 2012 Sidewalk Replacement Project? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Carry.
Item 2.4 is the citizen input on the 2010 City of Winona Core Neighborhood Rehabilitation Program.
Okay, I'll open that public hearing and ask if there's anyone present wishing to speak to the citizen input on 2010 City of Winona Core Neighborhood Rehabilitation Program? Anyone wishing to speak to the...okay, just state your name and address and come on up to them.
My name is Richard Harding. I'm at 701 Grand Street. And I sort of expected a question. I received a letter that there's a notice here, that there's a hearing. I guess this is the question, really. May I have comments regarding the program? Encouraged to provide the input on how this grant has assisted them in rehabbing their home. We replaced 23 windows in our home, thanks to the work of Ms. McMartin and Natasha Kousky. We did that two years ago now. And I...working with the Community Development Office was transparent. They were easy to work with, informative. And I recently conducted an Excel energy audit of my files, receipts, up through August 10th, 2012, back through September 15th, 2004. The records are clear in terms of how many kilowatt-hours one uses and how many therms of gas one uses. However, it is pretty difficult to tell, quite frankly, how much we have saved as a result of the windows before and after. As exhaustive a search as I made. I would estimate, though, that for us, the savings has been approximately between 6% and 10% in terms of our savings in kilowatt-hours versus therms. Beyond that, you know, the addition of the windows, they all work. Few of them did before, and that's great. Now, they work from the top down as well, which is nice. You don't need to use air conditioning as much because you can let some of the heat go out the top. None of the tops in our windows worked before. So it's just...it's a considerable improvement to the home. And we're glad to continue to maintain the home and with those windows. Thank you for your efforts.
So I understand you're happy with the program, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Yes, sir.
Good for you. And thank you to Lucy. That Community Development Department has been involved in these type of things for a long time. And it's good to hear that sometimes people say and come back and say, hey, it's good and it works. And thank you.
Most welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak to the citizen input on the 2010 City of Winona Core Neighborhood Rehabilitation Program?
My name is Frank Kleinschmidt. I live at 212 Kansas Street. And I think the biggest impact on me is both my wife and I are of retirement age and beyond and with a fixed income. We realize that we need all kinds of repairs in our house or to save some money long-term. We had, I think, 16 windows put in, brand-new, obviously. But my point being is that if we had to hold our windows up with sticks and whatever else to get some fresh in there, that's how bad it was. And now it's just beautiful. I had, I think, 42 straight days that we had the heat. So I finally could open all my windows up. And it was just a pleasure to get a breeze coming through every possible window we had in the house. So it was a treat. And we also had siding put on. In addition to that, I had some work done for my bathroom where we didn't even have a shower in there. We had the marrows circular ones just so we could say we took a shower. And we had new combinations put in there, shower tub combination. And I also had two exterior doors put on because I think you could probably hit an elbow and you might knock the door through, you know, that's how bad they were. So I was really, really pleased with the work we had and the fantastic help that it provided, both my wife and I, as far as being able to get a grant or a loan in order to pay this thing off. And like I say, the other gentleman indicated the kind of work that he dealt with, not only the staff from the core group, but also the people that we selected as far as doing the actual work. Absolutely phenomenal. They did wonderful work, cleaned up every day exactly like they said they did in the brochure. And we have no complaints whatsoever, so I just want to pass that along to the group. Anybody else that would...could take advantage of this program, I suggest you certainly try to do that. I remember when we had the first meeting back at the East Interrec Center a few years ago. They told us to call in on July 1st at 7:30 in the morning and, you know, just wait your turn and you'll get a call. Well, I called at 7:30 and I got through at 7:35. And I was number 39 on the list, and I was shocked that there were that many people that were interested, although there were probably well over 150 people. Don't you think so, George? There were so in that group. So there was genuine interest. And it took a while, and I didn't know if we just fell by the wayside or whatever. But last year, once they got started and called us and said everything looks fine, they'll start giving us estimates. Just a matter of time. After two or three weeks, we made a decision what we wanted to do. And it worked out fabulously. Like I say, we're just totally pleased with the work performance. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Didn't we just get another...I think we just got a $600,000 thing to continue this program. And it's been a very successful program that the city has used for quite a few number of years.
Yes.
So thank you for coming and telling us that, both of you. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak to citizen input on 2010 City of Winona Core Neighborhood Rehabilitation Program? Anyone else wishing to speak to the citizen input on 2010 City of Winona Core Neighborhood Rehabilitation Program?
Yes, Mayor and members of council, we did receive two letters from homeowners who also made comments. They stated that they could not have made the improvements to their home without the program. One homeowner said that energy bills were lowered by nearly one-half, and it allowed another homeowner to stay in her home because some accessibility improvements were made. So we received two letters about the program and how it helped. And both of those letters also complimented Natasha on her work. And that's correct. We just received money for Phase 2 that will carry out over the next two years.
And we will continue to go after those, as I believe, right?
Lucy, for the public too, and the deferred loans, like about...how long is the timeframe? And is it...and the interest rate, and is it really competitive?
Each loan is different, but a portion of the homeowner's loan is deferred and a portion they take a bank loan out for. And the deferred portion is 10 years that they must remain in the home.
Okay.
Or it's repaid.
Okay. And just a quick question, if I may. Because we talked of the wonderful input we got about the homes. That's just really exciting and we're pleased about it. And yes, it's been a great program for us for years. But you also talk about commercial rehabilitation. Could you give us just a couple of quick examples, please, of types of improvements that might be? You said there's some construction phases on three of the projects, for example.
Sure. The commercial program, we did seven commercial rehabilitation projects. They usually involved exterior roofs, storefront renovation, exterior painting. And the owner comes up with 50% of the money, and the program makes a low-interest loan for the other half. And a portion may be deferred.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Or Lucy? Okay, thank you, Lucy. Anyone else wishing to speak to the citizen input on 2010 City of Winona Core Neighborhood Rehabilitation Program?
Yes, Mark Chaworski, 534 Glendale Drive. And the project I'm referring to is 577 Huff. It's just been tremendous working with Natasha, I tell you. She's really amazing. She's actually...excuse me. I think she's actually the reason why it's so successful. She works not just well with me, but all the different trades, which is very complicated, especially when you're doing commercial stuff. And you hope when you do a commercial building that you do it right. But sometimes you find energy changes, cost change. And one thing for me, like in my building, I have probably 18 to 20 windows going in, which are California window style, which are a mirror-glazed-type window that helps me not taking so much heat inside my building. Now, one of my buildings is a commercial laundry. I got to tell you, you want to talk about utilities on one of those, just for air conditioning and stuff alone. And that's what I'm trying to change, part of that exterior stuff, like such as painting, which has been wonderful. My canopies, being able to redo these things. I built the building in 1996, that particular building, and thought that, you know, I had done everything right. But technology's changed. And there are things that can enhance my building, and I really appreciate this program. It's been just tremendous. It's going to be really fun for me to find out how much difference it's going to make, just really as far as energy. That's really my biggest thing, mainly on that end. Just because we continue on our properties here in Winona, which we've owned for 27 years, especially commercially, to enhance our properties, to make them respectful to the city, respectful to all the residents within our areas and so on. We take great pride in that, especially being close to the university. And I really do thank you for this program. It means a lot.
Thank you, Mark.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak to citizen input on 2010 City of Winona Core Neighborhood Rehabilitation Program? Anyone else wishing to speak to the citizen input on the 2010 City of Winona Core Neighborhood Rehabilitation Program? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. There's no action.
Action.
No action by the council. Thank you all for those comments. I'm sure we appreciated hearing, and I'm sure staff appreciates hearing that the good, you know, the good things that they do for the community. And without staff, none of this happens. Thank you.
Under petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1 is the Covenant of Friendship for the Dakota Nations.
Okay, Eric, you going to speak? Or Dr. McNeil, you going to speak? Who wants to speak? Bill?
I'll speak first.
Okay.
Yeah, hi. My name is Bill McNeil. I live at 1365 Skyline Drive in Winona, and I've lived there since 1981. By happenstance, I'm enrolled Dakota from Freud, Montana. And I grew up white and acculturated, and it took coming to Winona, when I was done with my medical school and my residency, to find out about Dakota history. And once I found out about Dakota history, it became a passion for me. This is sort of a love fest for the city because all that I've heard tonight has been positive stuff about the city. And I'm going to add to that because without the City of Winona, we wouldn't be having our ninth gathering. The city has been behind us from the get-go, and they continue to support us. And, you know, we're deeply indebted to you for that, and I want to say thank you. So in 2002, I first heard Dakota speakers, and they were here at City Hall. And we played moccasin, and we dreamed up a gathering. And it was to do reconciliation before we celebrated the giving away of the land in 1854. And we pulled that off, you know, with the city's help. But when we were out there in 2004, everybody looked at us and said, what the heck are you doing out here? What do you want of us? You want reconciliation? Is that a handshake on the stage? Is that come and sing and dance and go away? And, you know, at that point, we said, no. You know, reconciliation goes way beyond a year of reconciliation, a handshake on the stage, singing and dancing. It has to do with building community bonds. And that's what we have worked on for nine years. And because of all of those efforts, we have great friends in Canada, Montana, North and South Dakota. And because of those efforts, the people of Winona understand more about Dakota history than I think most people in Minnesota. Oh, it's getting a lot of publicity now because it is 150 years. And, you know, all of these landmarks are coming along, the covenant. You know, when we were out there, they wanted to know what sort of relationship are we going to have with you guys? And as we talked and as we wondered, we acknowledged that we have sister-city relationships with people in Japan, with people in Poland. And that might be a model for a formal declaration of how we want to associate with the dispersed Dakota nations. And so probably 2005, 2006, the effort to craft this document that you see began. And it's been through numerous iterations. It's been talked about from, you know, Santee to Sioux Valley to Fort Capel. And it's been talked about in City Hall. And, you know, I think we finally have acceptable language that just says, we want to be friends. And we want to formally be friends. And so that's all we're asking, is that if there's no objectionable language, if there's nothing the city can't commit to, then can we present this to our Dakota friends to say, if you're willing to sign, we'll take it back? And the city can again decide if they want to put their name on it. Yep? That's it. Pretty simple, eh?
Thank you. Eric, I think you had something?
Yes, I was asked to look at the proposed covenant, Eric Sorenson, 319 Pleasant Hill. I got to remember. I like it better on this side of the table, by the way. I was asked to look at, by the mayor and by members of the WDUA. I'm not on the board. I'm retired from the city, so these comments are offered simply by myself. I think the covenant looks fine. It's brought back to a more compact form. The environmental ordinances that are put in here, you've already committed to. So I see nothing that you should be worried about, as Bill said. The model, and I remember thus where we started, the model was a sister-city relationship model. And I would offer the following final language for your consideration of the motion so that it's clear what you're committing to. And the following language, Monica, would be, any request for City of Winona resources must be reviewed and approved by the city council prior to implementation. And I was just saying to Bill, I wish I had thought of that about four years ago.
I think Bill's shaking his head, isn't he?
And that way, everybody knows what the relationship is, and the commitments can be made that way. And I think it would...it would work well into the future. So with that, I wish you luck. And I think to anybody watching, you should all come out to the gathering and start to meet people, and you will enjoy it. Thank you.
Is HBC on? There's no audio or video.
Why don't you shut me off a little?
Oh, thanks.
There is.
The switch is on. Your Honor, with that said, I'd like to make the motion to authorize you to sign the Covenant of Friendship between the Dakota Nations and the City of Winona, and adding the, for in the minutes, what Eric had said for our records as well. One second.
Okay, there is a motion. Is there a second by Michelle? Questions?
Just a comment. Again, I want to thank members for coming and speaking very much so. And I know I've been involved with some iteration of this since it started in some way or another. And it was a lot longer, a lot more complicated, a lot legalese. Helped wordsmith, and now Eric did for sure at the beginning as well when he was city manager, and many others who have contributed a lot of time, effort, and energy. And I'm pleased to say it's become very simplified, less is more. And it's...I think it's a very...a good piece, like you said, as a sister-city type of expression. So thank everyone for all the many years and times and effort put into this. So I'm hoping that council will approve this so that we can move forward in our building, further our bonds and relationships with the Dakota Nations in another way and another venue.
Okay, I...just so everybody knows, city attorney has looked at this.
Yes.
And approved of everything, right, Mike?
Yes, Mayor and council members, our office did review this with the language, not the language that Mr. Sorenson just added. But the language as it's written in your packet was reviewed. And we do view this similar to a sister-city arrangement. It's not going to bind the city to do anything or not do anything. It's not a contract. It's more a statement of friendship. And so as that, it's...we feel like you could probably go ahead with this. You have the authority to do that, although there is no specific legal authority for it because it's like the sister-city arrangements. We feel that that's appropriate.
Okay. Al, you got a question?
Just a comment. I support the motion and wish to thank the members of the Winona-Dakota Unity Alliance for their hard work in this. It is, as Dr. had indicated, it's been a long journey for this, but I think it's a good ending and a good beginning, all at the same time.
Okay, Debbie?
I just want to make sure to mention too, since you brought that, the city attorney, of course, Chris Wood did approve it. We went back and forth with that. But also our board, the WDUA board, did approve this as well, just so as I get that in the record as well.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to authorize the mayor to sign the Covenant of Friendship as it was with the inclusion of the last sentence there by Eric? Okay? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Item 3.2, reappointments to the Human Rights Commission of Brenda Betcher, Carol Madlin, Paul Munt, and Chuck Ripley.
Move to approve those appointments.
Second.
Moved by George, seconded by Jerry. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the appointments to the Human Rights Commission? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carry.
Item 3.3 is the street closure request by Winona State University for the dedication of their new hall to Kirkland Hall on September 14th. Move to approve that request.
Okay, moved by Michelle. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Al. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the street closure request by Winona State? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Carry. By the way, just to tag on to that new...the new East Hall, I did ask about, I think about a year ago, it was brought to us some issues they were having there with safety concerns. And I believe MINDOT did get together with the university, and they worked some simple things out.
Actually, the city was a participant in that project.
Okay, the city and MINDOT, and it seems to be working.
The speed bumps are deterrent, I'm going to say.
All right.
Is that 11th Street?
Speed Tamar Street.
They're on tables. They do look like they do.
But the students say it's working good, so that's good. Just like that St. Mary's deal, you know, it doesn't always have to be complicated. They can be very simple. All right.
Item 3.4 is the farmer's market request for additional space for cooking demonstration on Saturday, September 29th. Move to approve.
Moved by Debbie. Is there a second? Seconded by Jerry. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the request by the farmer's market? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Under new business, item 5.1 is the 2013 Proposed Budgets and Tax Levy.
Okay. Mary, you want to say something?
Mayor and council, this is the annual request to adopt the proposed budget and certify the proposed levy for 2013. We have to have a certified levy to the Winona County by September 15th. And this is the levy that if you decide later you want to change the budget or the levy, it can go down, but it can't go up. So this is like the next step in the process of the budgets and the levy. And so this is the annual request. The total amount of the levy is $6,606,778. And you'll notice that it was reduced by the $6,500 from some bike path maintenance that we had taken out from the time that you had met at the end of August.
And maybe for public's information, so the levy will be...proposed levy will be what percentage?
The proposed levy is a 1.2% increase over that of 2012.
Okay, do we have a motion? Some moved by Jerry. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Michelle. Questions or comments? Al, Debbie?
Sorry, just a comment. We, of course, had a budget meetings last week we do every year at the end of August for two days, Monday and Tuesday. During just a portion of that, I talked about, and I know others on council did well, but I brought up that I think we really need to review the process as to how the city decides to allocate monies if and when we can, our fiduciary responsibility for nonprofits. to allocate monies, if and when we can, our fiduciary responsibility for nonprofits. Some of you may recall particularly a few years ago, when our local government aid or LGA was unallotted by Governor Palenti at the time, and then there was recession in 2008. There were other nonprofits that the city was able to give some money to that we no longer do. And currently, we've been giving now still money to the Winona County Historic Society. I know that's been about 32 years total. Project Fine as well, and then the Polish Museum. So we're going to staff and, I mean, the council members, so we're gonna relook at that process and how and what, and, because I'm sure, and whenever the city is able to, or what criteria, that there's other, probably other nonprofits as well, that maybe would seek to really be able to use some funds from the city at a certain time or certain criteria as we go through, go through that process. And adding to that as well, the city is, has been very generous in different ways and fashions, that we give in kind to other nonprofits. I mean, it could be something such as sidewalk, curb and gutter, sewer water connection, those types of things as well.
Okay, any other comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to adopt the 2013 proposed budgets and levy and tax levy. All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 5.2 is the 2013 budget and levy. Announcement of date for the public comment portion, this would be on December 3rd at 6:30 PM.
Move to confirm the dates, or the time and place is listed above.
Moved by Jerry, seconded by Al. Questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the announcement and the date. All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 5.3 is the proposed fee ordinance for 2013.
Move to introduce the proposed fee ordinance. Second. Moved by Al. Second. By Jerry. Questions or comments?
I have a question.
Okay, question?
Trying to find my other question. I forgot to mark. My one, one question is, I guess in general, like, what is the criteria, you know, rationale in general? I know it's per department. When they increase service fees and there's an increase, what are we looking at? Because it seems, it seems to me like every department, every year goes up, is it following kind of cost of living increases, just general all over, you know, administrative expenses? How are we coming to that?
Mary?
Debbie, you're right, that each department looks at the fees that they're responsible for, and then makes the determination if they believe they should go up or not. Some of that would be based on the expenditures, if expenditures have changed. Some of that would be for trying to build reserves in any funds. So each department looks at, you know, each of their fees individually.
And I don't know if you can speak to this, Mary, because this is Chad's department. Maybe Judy can, because we've learned at the budget meetings, just for an example, that there will, if it gets approved, there'll be a new fee, a nominal fee, for example, for renting the kayaks and the canoes and that, then at the lake lodge, which has been free the last, what, three years or so, I think it's been now. And also, there'll be some changes, for example, in membership, or new membership fee in the senior friendship program, so that people are aware of that, of that process.
Yeah, and I'm guessing that Chad has informed, or that there's been newsletters, or next spring, there'll be some information that there's a change that'll be made for the rental of the canoes and kayaks. So I'm sure that he'll be marketing or talking about the changes ahead of time, would be my guess.
Now, all those fees, whether it's the senior center or the kayaks, are very nominal fees, and I think whoever uses them gets a good deal, so. Any other questions or comments on the proposed fees? All in favor of the motion, which is to adopt the proposed fee ordinance? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 5.4 is to set the public hearing regarding liquor license fee increases. That hearing would be held on Monday, October 15th.
So moved.
Moved by Jerry, seconded by George. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to set the public hearing date for October 15th for the liquor license fees. All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 5.5 is an ordinance to amend the rental housing license code, section 338.03. Move to approve.
Moved by Debbie. Seconded by Jerry. I know, Michelle, you had a comment?
Yes. I just, because of the way it's worded, I just had some concerns about how this might affect not even just professional landlords, as I call people who do it for a living, but people who maybe rent out a room or own an owner-occupied duplex, and also what it might mean for some of our larger units, like the eightplexes and twelveplexes, or mansions that have been turned into rental. And once this would come into effect, let's say they had, happened to them, what happened to me is, the tenants broke the toilet, didn't tell us, and in one quarter, I had a $5,000 water bill, which I couldn't pay at that time, so it got assessed the taxes, and I went and paid it the next year. But had that been, if this had been in effect, I would have lost my license on that property, because I didn't have the $5,000 set aside for that particular project, because whatever it is, let's say the, there's an act of God, I don't know. So my question is, that home then becomes, in my opinion, kind of a blighted home in the neighborhood, because it cannot be rented again. An eightplex, if it were to get recertified, assuming it's not on a 30% block, could only ever be rented to three people, if it's not on a 80% block. So my concern, of course, is, are we gonna have some of these units go vacant, evict the 22-plus people that live there, and then when it comes back, let's say they do pay off whatever they owe, but it's not in the time set by the city, what's, I mean, what's the best outcome for that building? Is it gonna go into foreclosure, be empty, and be a host to pass?
You're not arguing the 30%.
No, or even...
You're arguing the process.
Right, or not even really, I don't, I mean, to be a realtor licensed, I have to have my personal home taxes paid every licensing period. I don't actually have a problem with that. I think if you have a licensed business, paying your taxes and your water bills is great. My concern is, because of the way our ordinance is, I want to make sure that the people that are willing to work with the city have some recourse, or some time period, or, God forbid, a tree falls on the roof, and they didn't have the $12,000 set aside to fix that, and then the water bill didn't get paid. My concern is that we're not going to look at this judiciously. I mean, I have this concern that if the property's in good condition, but for whatever reason they hit a financial fault, they got medical problems, they couldn't pay the water bill, I don't want us to start evicting people from homes when we could work with the landlord. So I guess my concern is here, what are their rectification process for them, or their time process? What are their options?
First off, we're only gonna be looking at this at time of licensure and all, once every five years. And in the instance where you talked about a broken toilet...
Yes.
And you didn't have the $5,000 to pay it, I mean, if you're willing, if you're willing to make payments on it and stuff and work on it, we'll work with you. I mean, we're not just going to go to work and suspend the license, you know, as long as you tell us what's going on and work out a payment program or whatever.
So any landlord that, because I understand you go into a property, and let's say it is just, you know, not livable, I get it. I get it.
That's a different issue, yes.
Right, and I firmly believe that the people in business should pay their bills, but there are extenuating circumstances at times. And at that point, I was up for renewal, so it would have affected me. That's what I, that's kind of what my point is, that it's not all just professional landlords. There are other people out there that I have concerns about.
You know, in that, in that case, we would have worked with you, because, you know, it was, it was beyond your control, and if you had explained it to us and said, "Well, I'm working on making and paying it off," we would have worked with you. What this is really targeting is the landlords that never pay their utility bills. They're always behind on taxes and things like that. It's not, not for the people that are honestly trying to pay their bills and that. I mean, as, as long as they're making an effort to pay them, and if, you know, haven't been in the rears before, you know, we'll work with you. I mean, that's not...
I use myself for the example, because I...
Well, I, yes, but there are other instances like that, too, where something like that could happen, and as, as long as the landlord's gonna talk to us and make an effort to catch up on things, that's fine.
So then that situation with a large house that really isn't reconvertible, they actually wouldn't lose their rental certification, or are we saying if they couldn't pay it...
We, we are not talking about revoking the license now. We're just talking about suspending it, which is completely different than revoking it. If we revoke it, that property does not have a license, period. If it's suspended, it's only suspended for a month or two months or that. And we're actually going to give them a chance to pay that before it would be suspended. So, you know, if we have to go out and do the inspection and their, and the rears on their taxes or their water bill, you know, we're gonna say, "You need to get this caught up within 15 days or whatever, otherwise you're gonna face suspension."
And how are you gonna let people that hold rental licenses know? Because, of course, some of them don't even rent out the property, they live in it themselves.
We're, we're actually going to, first of the year, we're gonna start with a application form. So when we send out the renewal letter, we have an application form ready to go that we're gonna send along with it, and it's gonna ask for the name of the owner and the address of any property manager that would be there. And then they have to sign a statement at the bottom that certifies that the taxes, the utility bills and that are current, and they agree to keep them current.
Okay. I forgot to say this, I'm gonna abstain on this vote for a variety of reasons, but I did want to point out my few concerns from the real estate perspective. Thank you.
Yes.
George, and then Debbie.
Just for my own clarification, now, let's say I own five properties, okay?
Okay.
And now, October 1st, my property is due, and all the bills are paid on that, but maybe I got a couple that are lagging behind, that are due maybe in another couple of years. This is just for the property that I'm relicensing now, correct?
Yes, that's the property we're looking at, is the one that you're gonna relicense.
Okay, so the other three or four that I own, and if there's back bills on those, those don't go against what I'm trying to do now?
No, not for that property, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Debbie?
I was gonna say, this is, I think, I kind of wish it would happen sooner, I didn't think of it, I'm glad you did, because I know many of us here, and those have been, I've been on eight years, and there, I'm, we all know of folks that are still on the list, so, oh, you know, some form of property tax been assessed, or their water bill hasn't been paid, and I know some, and everything that's been going on for years, and they rent. Either it's just themselves, or they have a duplex, or whatever it is. We need to be able to, I think, have some more teeth to recoup some of that money. I think it's very fair, again, notification, transparency, we have all of that, that that's due to the city, because it hurts all of us in the city. You know, the monies that doesn't come in as well, that we need to be, do, do the right thing and get that. Again, as you said, it's licensure every five years, and a lot of these landlords are very, very well aware of it, and haven't, at least making a good faith effort, like you said, to say, "I'm gonna try to pay for it, or let me do this, make it on a schedule," because we know stuff happens. Again, they need to make the good faith effort, and I know the city's been really, really good about that, but it's the folks, too, that haven't been, so maybe that will kind of get them to relook at this and come forward and do something positive.
One thing, though, they do get charged a pretty good interest rate.
They do, but, yeah, but hopefully we can recoup a lot more.
And we don't, we don't lose the money, because if there's a change of ownership or something, then it all goes back on the, on the house. And what is, do we know what, what is the percent? Is it 8% or...
There's actually fees added on to it.
Okay. Fees added on.
Water bills, there's a light fee added on, and then if it actually goes to assessment, then there's another fee added on to that, and...
Those fees get to be pretty expensive, too. So it behooves them to pay their bill, and this might put a little bit more teeth in it.
That's what I mean, yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion, which is to approve the amendment to the rental housing license code, section 338.02. All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 5.6 is the silica...
I have to abstain.
Abstain, okay, whatever, okay, I'm sorry.
Item 5.6 is the silica sand mining generic environmental impact statement resolution of support.
Okay, Carlos, you want to explain this a little bit, please? It's pretty well put forth here, but just to the public...
Yeah, I'll just briefly go over what the council has in front of them right here. Staff request council consider the attached resolution of support for a GEIS related to silica sand. On August 13th, the Planning Commission recommended that the city council take official action in support of a GEIS. A GEIS is a study meant to analyze an issue of regional or statewide significance. It's a substitute method for environmental review. It's ordered by the Environmental Quality Board, and either completed by the board or another state agency. Two GEISs have been done in the past, one on the timber harvest in 1994, and one in animal agriculture in 2002. The EQB has received numerous requests and petitions to study silica sand mining under a GEIS format. Although there were many reasons given by the petitions for GEIS, perhaps the most important is that various issues related to frac sand cross jurisdictional boundaries, so they're larger than a city or a county, and that's represented in the resolution that's in front of you tonight. If approved, the attached resolution would be sent to the EQB before their September 19th meeting, when they'll be discussing potentially ordering a GEIS. And so should council concur with the resolution, a motion to approve it would be in order.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Debbie, seconded by Jerry. Questions? Okay, questions?
Carlos, thank you for that question. A couple of questions, as it says here in our agenda item, again, I think it's important for the public to know, the GEIS would not stop existing or future projects if one does get approved by the state.
Correct.
Correct. And from my knowledge, I was also at that informational meeting that we held here at the middle school, end of June, and I'm going by memory, I didn't get to review, check it, but I believe, we're going on the past, again, those other two GEISs that were done on the timber harvest and the, as you said, animal agriculture, I believe they can take anywhere approximately, on average, anywhere from four to six years.
Yep, exactly. It takes a few years.
It is, it's a work in pro, in progress, so that the public know, is that it's not an instant thing. And in tandem, so, you know, at the same time, what the city has been doing has been very, very good, you know, doing what we can at this level, because there's a lot of different levels of governmental units that are involved with all of this as well. So getting the at-home picture and as it goes out, and looking at the, looking at the future and the present as well.
Okay, and the state pays for it, right?
Yes.
That was my question, so. Now, the state is the one that does this, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
The mayor just, could they deny this request?
Yes, they could. They'll basically be talking about it at their next meeting here. They could also choose to address some of the issues about frac sand in a different format, so they could direct the state agency to respond directly to some of the questions that have come up. That could be an alternative to ordering a GEIS.
Okay. That's all. Michelle?
And Carlos, this really doesn't stop our process, because we will still determine what, what we want to put in place for ourselves, and then if new information comes up, we just either adjust, change, or amend anything we've done. Is that correct?
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to support the silica sand mining generic environmental impact scene. All in favor of that, say aye. Aye, those opposed, carry.
Item 5.7 has been pulled from the agenda, so we are at 7.1 council concerns.
Okay, we'll start with Al.
Thank you, Mayor. Didn't have much, but then I had a call just before I came to the meeting tonight, and I want to work with Public Works and our finance department on a water issue, and maybe have an opportunity to have a presentation by a constituent before council on the water rates, so, that's all I have tonight.
Okay, Jerry?
Same old thing, Keith. If you could talk to your best friends over at the railroad, they got some mowing to do at a lot of the intersections, so I won't give you the numbers, I just figure it's probably everyone.
Get the rain today.
Yeah, so, they got by easy this year by not mowing at all, so I think they need to get it before fall. If they could be so kind, otherwise, let's find the heck out of them. Also, Keith, what, you mentioned it before, but what date and time are the three Emerald Ashboard dogs coming? Bruce, you got the dates? You gave them to me, but I forgot to bring them tonight.
September 6th, this Thursday, roughly, a demonstration will be at 10:10.
And it's open to the public?
It's open to the public.
Okay, for the media, what these guys were telling me is, this is a very rare deal. They chose Winona, so this is a really cool story, so. And I think the labs will beat the German Shepherd. And I think the labs will beat the, the German shepherd, is my opinion, but that's just a bet.
Tell them what the dogs do.
I don't know what the dogs do.
I thought they sniffed out the Emerald Ashboard.
They do.
Oh, they sniff out the bugs. Yeah.
Again, it's this Thursday.
What time is it?
September 6th.
Gotcha.
Where at? Where? Location?
At the. Compost. Compost.
1031.
That's it, thank you.
Michelle, Debbie.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was able to attend the Pollution Great Minnesota City Summer Conference at the end of July, just trying to make every area, it was in Owatonna, and very, very informative for a number of reasons, and also, went on a tour that the Owatonna had set up, and I did give all the information specifically to the city manager, but I wanted to bring it up, because I came across some information I had shared with council back in 2007, kind of ties into this. They have a wonderful program, very, that works really well, rain garden program that they have. They, we also, the man who gave us the tour was their storm water manager, and they also have rain barrel program that they had going, and for example, their Coca-Cola company there donated the barrels, that's a whole really great thing that they reuse water, because the point is, like they say, treating rainwater where it falls, they have adopted rain garden, they were able to get some low-impact development grants from MPCA, like for rain gardens, et cetera. They said they have a green corps, which is similar to the peace corps, that you can get help as well, and the Minnesota City Storm Water Advocacy group as well. And then they have a program, I think they're kind of pilot-leading if I remember, it's called Porous Paved Alley, about how water assimilates through it, and through the porous ground, they're using those as two demonstration pieces there. The piece of information I wanted to share quickly, from, even though it's from 2007, but it's from the National League of Cities, that they said a study from Minnesota demonstrated that a street containing rain gardens reduced storm water runoff 90% compared to, compared to a similar street with no rain gardens. They said pollution reduction is also a benefit, and so they're trying to get these, encourage them as well, that cities also adopt them, but as well as homeowners. So I'd really like a staff that they could either, you know, talk with them, or with, what's his name? His name is Matt Durant, he's the storm water manager there at Owatonna, I think he also has a lot of information up on his website, as to how they did it. And last piece they had, from our downtown, which I learned the term for, it's called a mural-a-pocket park, they talk about public art, but it is privately owned buildings that whoever owned them let citizens paint murals on them. An example was, these were real historical people and events that they depicted on the buildings, and it's a small park, people come during lunchtime or break or whatever, so kind of a thought, it's, it's an interesting tour there that they have downtown, so they try to get more happening in people to walk around downtown as well. And last, again, yes, another plug, but for the Great Dakota Gathering and Homecoming, which is next week already, it's starting Friday the 14th to Sunday the 16th, so Friday is new for us. Basically, we have a grand entry, kind of to kick things off at 7 o'clock, and this year, as we maybe heard earlier, was really, really significant, it's 150th anniversary, 150th year for commemorating the Dakota Conflict in 1862, so we have a lot, some really new things happening there, and it's very, very significant as well tonight. Thank you, everyone in council for approving the covenant of friendship as well.
You know, we get a lot of it hard over on the old wagon bridge.
Yeah.
George.
Okay, thank you. Few weeks back, I talked about campaign signs, and I did not know that they were such a hot commodity. People like to bend them, they like to steal them, and speaking with other political candidates, I gave you an offer, if you want to sign, any political candidate will bring you one, you don't have to steal it, we'll even autograph it for you. So 30 years from now, you can say, by God, look what I have, I wonder where that person is. Oh, he must be dead 30 years now, so, anyway, you know, if you can, leave the campaign signs alone, they're very expensive, all political candidates put a lot of time and effort into getting them out there, people graciously display them for us, and, you know, if you can, please leave all political signs alone. Thank you, thank you for that, so. Wall Street, coming along very, very well, they're moving right along, a lot of big piles of ties there, I see some people are kind of sifting through them, maybe to find a good one or not, so I don't know what a tie is worth, two bucks, three bucks, four, but if you can lift them, I suppose, I don't know, so.
They're being used for political lawn signs.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, put a lawn sign on that, so. And then also, this weekend is the dedication of Saint Stanislaus Church in the East End to the title of Basilica, so there's gonna be a lot, a lot of activity going down around there Saturday evening and Sunday, and that is certainly a big plus for not only the church community, but also for the city of Winona. It'll be the second Basilica in the state of Minnesota, which joins a total of 75 in our country, so it's certainly gonna be a festive event and a spiritual event as well, too. If you can attend, please do it. And also, I'd just like to simply pass on condolences to the family of Mark Henningsgard, to his wife Sue and her children. Mark's untimely death has left a void with a lot of people, and we certainly lost a craftsman. And how are we gonna remember Mark? There's many homes in this town, in businesses, that you will see his professional woodworking skills done in these homes and businesses, so we share condolences with his wife and children. He will be missed, thank you.
Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there are two items, approval of the minutes from August 20th, and the final adoption of an ordinance for rezoning 702 Mankato Avenue.
Move to approve the consent items. Moved by Al, same by George. Questions? All in favor of the consent, which is the approval of minutes and one ordinance? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry on.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we adjourn.
Moved by Jerry, second by Debbie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry on. Thank you very much.